I'd like to call this meeting of the Harriman City Council, September 3rd, 2019, to order. Before we get started, we'll have pledges, allegiance to the flag, followed by prayer by Councilman Wright.
Would you join us, please?
Hail, Father, thank you tonight, first of all, for the good fortunes that we, as a community and as individuals, have experienced. Father, we realize that our accomplishments are not mere love, but are blessings from you. May your Spirit continue to guide us as we move into the future and seek to provide the needed services for our citizens. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to meet and discuss the issues, being a guest tonight. And we're thankful for those who meet with us each week and for their interest and support at the activities that we're ongoing in our community. And may you continue to bless our city and state and country with Christ on your feet.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call her up, please.
Darryl Cook.
Here.
Betty Holly.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonny Wright.
Here.
I'd like to pray a form, get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 20th, 2019 meeting.
I make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Cook. Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Cook.
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Motion carries. A motion to pay the salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Russell.
Say.
Say, Councilman Holly, Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Holly.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonny Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. A motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright, seconded by Councilman Cook. Councilman Wright.
No.
Councilman Cook.
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonny Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. If there's anyone out that'd like to address the council, please come up to the podium, your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm May with Rowan Alliance. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the funding of the Rowan Alliance. I appreciate your consideration. As you know, I have two new staff members. I hope to bring them by next time. They're getting acclimated. One started last week and one started the week before. So, once we get them up and running, we're going to have regular reporting for you guys, at least quarterly, on what's going on and what we're doing for Harriman. So, just wanted to let you know that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody have anything for Rowan Alliance? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I'm Bruce Snoblock, the current president for the Cornstalk Heights Historical Community Organization. And since I took over the presidency earlier this year, I've made a policy to have a weekly, or excuse me, a monthly newsletter to improve our communications. We do that for the purposes of not only getting what our vision is, but also to let people know what's going on. And so, we also do send out copies to the council members and other city officials. And in this particular month, we had identified something for the city. I just wanted to bring it up today to put it in the record. And this was regarding the pre-clean-up program that was provided last month. It was announced during the August 6th council meeting that the city of Harriman was conducting a special cleanup program during the month of August. Residents could leave junk not normally collected by the weekly trash service next to the road for collection by the city. We informed our members on the email distribution list of this opportunity. We are sorry, of course, for those within the organization which were unable to be informed because we don't have emails for everyone. As homeowners and also as a community, we owe a huge thank you to the city of Harriman for occasionally providing the special pickup. In addition, we say thank you to the Harriman Street Department, which routinely picks up vegetation, yard debris as part of their normal services. Maintaining a tidy historical property can be a challenge due to the home maintenance, mature trees and other plantings, and simply our accumulation of stuff. Thanks for the opportunity to have a cleanup day for free, or actually, I should say, a cleanup month for free. I'm one who was born northern by birth and southern by the grace of God. When conversing with others who ask how we enjoy so many government services with so little taxes, I simply say, "I don't know." Reflecting now, I believe it's in large part the Tennessee culture of pride and caring. Civic pride, community collaboration, and personal volunteerism result in the common good for all without expecting and the expense of the government dealing with all areas that we individually can serve. Thank you to all who serve, whether it's in your career or as a volunteer. It's not typical in larger municipalities. That's not to say we have every problem solved and it's all smooth sailing. We do have issues to overcome yet. However, if we continue to act and collaborate for the common good, we will succeed in not only improving our environment, but also the environment around us. And again, I say thank you to the council for allowing that. The workers within the city, I do see passion in what they do in their jobs. And you think of some of the news, the national news that you see with the major cities where a lot of times the council doesn't even support the departments and allow them to do their jobs. And I just want to thank you all for the leadership that you're providing this community. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to address council? Now, we'll go into reports. Come on to the board.
Well, first of all, we had a fantastic day yesterday at Rakeford Harriman. I thought everything went off really well, shaped the well-organized event. Our employees had a great time in interacting with families and general public. As far as our projects go, we just completed work at the bridge in front of Crystal's, got our sewer and gas lines moved there. And we've just approved a contract for CR barges and suns to replace the waterline along Rick's Chapel Road. Hopefully, that'll get started in the next month or so. We have, our board has elected to reschedule our October board meeting to allow for the HUB employees to participate in truck retreats. We're looking forward to another great year. You may have noticed, we've been doing some work up. We've just pulled a new power line across Emory River, which is a backup feed to our sewer plant. And we've got a bid opening scheduled for this Thursday, September 5th, which is our cast iron gas replacement, the final phase of that. Any questions?
How are we doing on the test on this? How many miles have we got left?
So, this'll be the, it'll be the last phase. So, we should be able to get started this fall and be finished by this time next year when we completely done with it.
Remember, we started with 11 miles.
It's very expensive. We spent, luckily, TDOT paid for the first project because it was part of Rhodes and Rose. The second project was over a million dollars, maybe 1.2 or something like that. This last project, I'm expecting it to be over one and a half million. So, it's very expensive. Thankfully, our gas department's been able to find us that up.
Just met Candace. Mayor, before she sets down, I'd like to inform everybody, in case you don't know, that on August the 6th, at the Tennessee Association of Utility District Annual Business Conference, which was helping Gatlinburg, that Candace, our general manager, was honored as Professional Woman of the Year for 2019 in recognition of her impact, positive impact and excellence in the water and wastewater industry. This has been an ongoing thing as far as Candace's concerns. She's been involved for several years. The Long County News, by the way, has an excellent article in yesterday's paper that goes into more detail. But as a councilman, Mayor, I think we need to congratulate Candace on this achievement.
Thank you.
We had a good day yesterday at Rakeford Harriman. This has probably been my night at Rakeford Harriman I've been involved in. And I think we had more vendors than I'd ever had in the past. We had about 88 vendors. And we actually had long lines at some of the vendors with people. And so, it went off really good. We couldn't have pulled it off without the help from the police department. Police department was great yesterday. They stayed with us all day. Chief Tap made sure that everything was taken care of. The street department, you know, great job getting it cleaned up afterwards. Parking wrecks, I got to really, really thank Natasha a whole lot because she sort of got half of this done. So, without her, we surely wouldn't have got it all done. But we'll thank Natasha and Charlie to get through for helping with Rakeford Harriman. And HUB has become a huge part of Rakeford Harriman. And Candace gets really excited about these events. And it's good to see her and get excited about those events. But I thank HUB for everything they've done. I want to keep talking. Well, the fire department, Brad Daniels and his staff, they're out, helps us get the power hooked up and everything. So, they do a great job. Just everybody that's offered to help and pitch in, that made it a very good event for the city. And I want to take the opportunity, this may sound a little weird to you, but I want to thank Mr. Helms and his body for giving me this opportunity to step back into this job. It reminded me Sunday night when I was out there marking off the things, you don't understand the feeling, but you get a little excited about the Rakeford Harriman that's going on. I had that feeling come back Sunday. But I want to thank you all for this opportunity to step back into this role. Another thing we're working on is the museum upstairs. We've got the electrical work completed. We've got the floor on, one side is completed. We're working the heat and air people were there today. So, they're going to be working this week to get that installed. And we've got some other things. We're not far away from starting to move things into the, to the museum upstairs. Does you have any questions?
Anybody have anything for Mr. Ellis?
Good job.
You did a good job, man.
Thank you. And it was, the Rakeford Harriman Labor Day Festival was great. There was a lot of vendors. I only heard great comments, nothing negative. So, we thank you for all you've done. Natasha loves to speak, so we'll let her speak in just a minute. We appreciate what you've done.
Me and Natasha's going to give them a word tomorrow for next year.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Natasha, you want to go now or you want to wait and come back?
I'm good right now.
Please, Carter.
We, we got our packet sent out a little late today. It's not complete when you go and look at it. Yesterday was a holiday. Sunday was the first. Today, the girl that does the stats for us from 911 Center doesn't come to work till 3 o'clock. So, the calls to service won't be on there. And the citations for the month of August won't be on there. When we get the packet complete, we'll resend it to Teresa so she can send it out. I'm sorry. It brings me to kind of a point that I looked at October, November, and December. October, the council meeting is on the first. December, it's like on the second or third, which November will be okay. It's on the 6th or 7th. But there may be months that you all might would rather have our report the second meeting because it's just hard to get it put together if it falls on the first or second day of the month. And I didn't know if y'all mind if that comes up, if it would be okay to do that, or just give you half a report and give the rest later.
I think it's fine. I think the second meeting is...
It would just make it a lot easier to get the stats together if it falls like on the first or second day of the month. But you have a half packet. And like I said, the rest of it, we'll have ready by tomorrow. And I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Counselor, any problem with that?
No.
Sounds good. So, what we do is we move you to the second meeting of the month, if that works for you, and just leave it there.
That would actually benefit us with our stats that it don't put us in a bind.
Just don't take too long because we like to get out pretty quick on the second.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have anything?
Anybody have any questions? We do have one of our new police officers that started yesterday in attendance, Josh Reimer. He's actually started work yesterday. And he's here with Richard today. So, he's one of our new ones that we've hired. And I'll get the other ones here maybe next council meeting.
How long's Josh been an officer?
19 years. He's been a, he worked at Rockwood for 16.
Yes, sir.
And the Sheriff's Department for 30. Hopefully, he'll be at Harriman for 20.
Looking forward to it. Right ahead of you, Josh. You're welcome to speak to us behind the curtain.
Come on, Josh.
Park you.
Well, you guys got my report by email. And mine was a little late too, due to the same thing that Baron said. The only other thing I got, I don't really got anything else to report. I just want to thank all of you all for supporting the departments when we can get the equipment that we need and stuff. Since I've been fire chief, there hasn't been a time that I've come to you all and need, that you just haven't stood up and done what you just need to do to get our equipment that we need. And I really do appreciate it. And that's all I have. I don't take any questions that y'all have.
How's your training facility going?
Kind of slow motion right now. I'm working on some stuff. Hopefully, here, maybe in the next month or so, I can bring something that'd be pretty big to you all. I'm working on something kind of behind the scenes. I can't say nothing right now. But I'm working with a group of people that hope and pray that some things come through for us that 'll be pretty big.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your help on Rakeford Harriman.
Not a problem. Truck retreat's next.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Thank you. Come forth, Mr. Reimer.
Hey, I could go second. Make the two of them up.
You would?
Yeah.
You got an excuse?
Yeah.
I'll see you first meeting next month.
See you. So, we started picking up, I was 12, through the 23rd. Probably had, we hit everything I know two to three times in that period of time. Caught into that for about 13 dumpster full, probably more. And I know we got at least 13. After we done all of that, we came back, backed the building, mowed, loaded all the metal, got the back of the city office cleaned up. Still more than weed eating, state mediums, the city, city right away. Bus stop, riverfront, Oakdale Highway, and a little bit for Buddy at Paper Mill. I hope we helped you out.
You heard him.
And we packed and worked on the Wapo and Trout Riverfront, Charlotte. Cleaned around town two or three days before Labor Day started, before the big day. And we're still working hard on the brush. And we cleaned up last night after the Rakeford.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Reimer?
I just want to thank Drac and your guys for everything y'all do. I rode around with him last week. And he showed me a bunch of areas that they cleaned up and everything. And it really looks good. They do a heck of a job.
Hey, Drac, just want to thank you. Come through town last night, 7:30 or so after they opened everything up. And town was spotless.
Thank you.
Everybody that worked on cleaning that up did a wonderful job. I mean, you could tell that we'd had thousands of people here to herd it today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer. And just echo what they said. A lot of times, your guys go unnoticed. We're always thanking the police department, fire department, and the red department stuff. And sometimes your guys are behind the scenes. They do a lot of stuff. They keep our town looking for you. We appreciate the hard work you put in. I know that every night, you ride around town just looking at what you got to pick up the next day. As I said, we appreciate what you do and your guys. Parks are red, Mr. Helms.
All right. Before I get started, I would like to thank Natasha. She might not come back after tonight, but I appreciate her being here. And Jake, I guess I'm working my fourth week being here. And I couldn't have done it without her. And Natasha knows all about red. She's got the football department going, the red league going. It's like the fourth week there. It's an excellent job. Anything I asked her to do, she's done it. And Jake, he knows the fields. He knows the parks. So, it's been, I mean, it's been a great, I mean, I've had a great time doing this. And because of them, they've made it my job so easy. So, I appreciate y'all being here and your support. We had, like I said, we've had, this week will be our fourth Little League ballgame we have. And everything's going great. This will be a home game. We got this week the first, first home game, I think. Chief Tap, he come help call the game for me. And I appreciate that. This Saturday, Randy Ellis is going to call it. So, I appreciate your help. We got there too. Appreciate all you've done for us there. We met with the red advisory committee on August 28th, discussed some things we need to do with Riverfront Park. Now, we've had a lot of issues and stuff like at night. And I've talked to Chief Tap and some things we can do to make it safer. And we've come up, we would like to close it at 11 o'clock at night and reopen next morning around 5:00. We have a lot of people comes in and walks in the morning time. So, we'd like to, you know, open up around 5:00. And Chief Tap said he would let his guys come in and close it for us and open it for us. So, you know, I think that's something we'll look at. And actually, I'd like to start it probably next week if that'd be okay. Then, we're going up to the community center. Some of the, we've come up some prices on maybe renting out some of the buildings and the gym and stuff there. We've come up some prices on there, maybe $25 for two hours. I think the gym, we're going to do $50 for two hours. And even at Riverfront Park, the Bavian and the Zibo, $25 for two hours. We've come up a lot of times and people's not really taking care of it. We feel like they pay a little bit. They'll come and set up a time. We'll be there Saturday at 12:00. We write it down. They never show up. We feel like they pay a little bit of money. I think they'll probably, you know, keep that appointment or won't even make it. So, it's a couple things we've on there. So, this Monday, Riverfront Park, we're going to start paving the Riverfront Park. If everything works out, it'll be this Monday. And I want to thank Drac. He's done a lot of work down there for us. A lot of people said Charlie, the park looks the best we've ever seen it. A lot of it's because of work he's had at Bush Hall and just some things he's done down there. I asked him, I said, "Drac, would you work on the track a little bit?" Some of the ladies, you know, said they'd like to see it fixed up. Drac got right on that. I appreciate that, Drac. It's made, it's a big help to me. And we're going to work on that. But hopefully, we're going to close it. If everything's, we're going to close the park Monday. They're going to be there with all the paving equipment. So, we're going to close it Monday, going there and, you know, get that done. And I talked to Jake. Jake said it'd be a good time for us to go and do a lot of pressure washing at the Zibo and some other things in there. And I talked to Chief Daniels. He said it'd come down. Maybe we can work on, maybe clean up some stuff too there. So, I appreciate their help on that to get that stuff done. We talked to the regional prison about some prisoners coming down and maybe clearing out the bank on Riverfront. I think they've done it in the past. I know we need to get it done now. A lot of the weeds and stuff that grown up, you can't hardly see the river on certain points. We want to get that done. Also, we can see what we need to do because that's something that the future is going to look at because of the erosion right there. I want to look at that, maybe doing some more riff ramp or something. That's something we need to look at. And we'll be looking at it in the future, too. Then, a crew started out. We started, actually, went to the Sheriff's Department a couple weeks ago and went through a class. Every one of us went through the class. I want to make sure everybody knows exactly what to do. And I think Natasha probably enjoyed it more than any of us. But, you know, we all went through that. And I think we really enjoyed it. Appreciate the Sheriff's Department letting us go through there, took us through, tour through the building and the stuff. But, you know, it allows us, I mean, every day, we've been picking up three inmates. Help us to clean up the parks and doing some other stuff there, too. And Jake said it's working out really good. And we hope to get even a few more down for Monday as we're cleaning up the parks. And probably one of the big things I want to start, and I'll talk to Bill Lagoon and Judy Housley. They're from the insurance company, inspectors or whatever. We want to start a safety program implementing. That's the thing we're going to actually start this, probably this week. I want to do a safety on a playground and on our parks, everyone, just every month, we want to have a program. We're going to be working on that. And I think Chief Daniel said he'll help us on that. He's got some programs in there, too. But I'm going to meet with Judy this Thursday at 1:00. We'll work on that also. And because a lot of parks, from right, she sent me some information, a lot of parks, every playground, we have to mow, every playground. And that's something we'll be starting probably even next week. What we do Riverfront, we'll be working on that. And we're installing some new lights. Actually, HUB, I appreciate them for installing some new lights at the Pine Hills Park. We're putting a new basketball goal up there this week also. And they also, HUB is helping us with a water line on the paper maker field. They've been a water line there. Had problems forever on it. So, we've got that taken care of. We sure appreciate them, too. And they helped us on the softball fields, stretching the, you know, some lines and stuff we have right there, the nets and doing all that for us. We appreciate them for helping us on there. And then, we also, we're going to be partnering with the Three Rivers Theater to help promote and offer active classroom lessons. We'll let them use the Harriman Community Center. Don and Martha will be working on that. We'll be working with them to see what help we can help them. And probably lastly, I appreciate everybody, but probably Teresa, I appreciate her. I probably hit Teresa's office every day, you know, asking questions about this, what about that. So, she's been a big help. From little stuff to big stuff. She said you can't do that. You can't, you know, she kind of's been guiding me the way there, too. But September, Natasha's real proud that she does a good job on things we have at our community centers, some line dance. Anybody want to do any line dance? We have several things that going on. Our Mark, our former Mark, is only going to last a few more weeks. So, it's a program we're going to look at next year, see if we can help them out and do some other things there, too. We've got our cornhole tournament coming up pretty soon. Let's remember that. And I'm excited. Now, everything we got going. So, we're, any questions?
Thank you, Charlie.
You're doing a great job, Charlie.
Thank you, sir. So, are you looking at park? We'll start closing Monday.
We're working to get the signs out front. We'd like to do it if we can get them all done. Mr. Helms will need to get with Chief Tap to make sure our sign said exactly what we want it to say. We're going to try to work it. Just as soon as we get the sign, we want to put it in, get it closed.
Kevin, you want to include the rules on that sign, too? Or you're going to have a separate signs for that as far as what the rules are down the park?
There'll be a separate sign for that. This should just be a sign with regard to closing park hours and stuff.
All right. Thanks, Charlie. Library.
We just finished a two-week book sale. I don't have the figures of what we got, what we were able to sell because it just finished on Friday. We found that it all up. I did receive a tech grant. And it's for $1,407. It's a matching grant. So, by the time it's all over with, it'll be $2,800, $1,400. Got computer classes. We're still going on. Thursday is our next class. It is social media for businesses. So, if there's some businesses out there that needs help with their social media, come to the library on Friday, I mean, Thursday at 5:00. And we'll figure it all out. And the children's programs begins this coming week, our regular ones during school year. We've got show and share on Mondays and preschool class Wednesdays. We also, she has started this sweet little program of tea and storytime online. So, you might want to check that out if you have grandchildren and children. It's on our Facebook page. And on Thursday, we have two different homeschool classes. So, we're getting geared up for the regular season. And of course, we'll help Cornstalk Heights with the Christmas tree. It'll be here before we know it. And we're looking forward to Halloween, too.
Anybody have anything for the library? Thank you, ma'am. What's Carter?
Well, we actually put in the budget amendments that you approved and closed the books for the year. We've also put in the new budget into the accounting system so that you can get your reports with the information from the budget. I am preparing a packet to go to Nashville for approval. And a lot of routine things. We will have probably in the next two weeks, some activity with respect to mail-out of the property tax notices. So, we'll be working on that as well. the year. We've also put in the new budget into the accounting system so that you can get your reports with the information from the budget. I am preparing a packet to go to Nashville for approval and a lot of routine things. We will have probably in the next two weeks, some activity with respect to mail out of the property tax notices. So we'll be working on that as well.
Do you have anything for Dr. Curley?
Thanks, sir.
C. Attorney.
I've just been working with code enforcement to enforce some of our property maintenance cases that we had orders from the court to enforce. So we're working on enforcing those. And then I have some new ones to get started and start that with more properties in town. So you'll see some more activity on that.
Okay. Anybody have anything for C. Attorney?
Thank you, ma'am.
C. Manager, Mr. Hammonds.
Yes, sir. Over the next week, we'll be preparing our paving specifications for this year. It's time for us to redo the paving contract. We're going to try to coordinate that with the LPRF grant focused to see if it can be written in a way to where we can cover the work that we do under the grant as well as the streets that we paved this year. And I know we also set aside some money for paving of the parking lot at the golf course. So we're going to try to, try to write those specifications so that they're all encompassing from that standpoint. We, Kenny and I will be attending the third and I think final, I hope final, meeting, mandatory meeting of the LPRF grant on the 9th of this month. That will be in Knox School, and we'll be down there that morning, learning whatever it is we need to learn to get the project rolling. So we're already doing some work on the project, reviewing information from various suppliers. So there are some steps that we are already taking. But this will be our final meeting, and shouldn't at that point really let us start moving forward with the grant full force. We are targeting opening the splash pad in May of next year. When we do have items that are in our hands that we need to get completed with regard to this grant, be able to meet that deadline, we need to be able to prioritize that, put it at the top of the list, get it back to the state. Because you never know how long it's going to take once it goes back to them to get processed and back to us. So there'll be some times throughout the course of this project where we may have to set a few other things aside to make sure that we're focused on this. For us to really be sure that we get that money opening date that we all want to get for the splash pad. Last week, we completed our damage inventory for the Fama project for the reimbursements regarding the flooding. Basically, what that means is we closed out the reporting of any damages or new damages that we may have come across since the event occurred and are continuing to provide the information to families that they need to reimburse us for some of those expenses. But at this point, what has been reported is all that we can, we can claim at this point. We are in the process. I'd like to thank Councilman Cook for bringing to our attention a program that Brown County is recently working through with the transition of the cell phone service for public agencies. And we are working with the same company, AT&amp;T, to make a transition as well. It's a program that's set up to provide some benefits for the responders and giving priority to the communication towers and so forth. So it looks like not only will we receive some additional benefits with regard to that program, but we'll probably reduce our monthly bill by a few hundred dollars as well. So that's something we're tentatively probably looking at being able to do between the 11th and the 13th of this month. As far as some upcoming things that we have planned, we're partnering with Pirates Fest on October the 5th, show the Pirates blood Francis Theater. That's an old movie starring Errol Flynn. So we hope everyone will come out and see that. As was mentioned, October 28th, it's Trump retreat. November the 8th, we are planning Dixie Levee, and we should be inviting the marker that the State Historical Society has granted to us in the Walnut Hills area. But we also will be showing one for movies at Francis that evening as well. We have the lighting of Mary's Tree on December the 2nd and the Christmas parade on December 5th. So there's a lot of things coming up in the near future, as well as some yet to be determined dates and activities with the partnership that Charlie Jones mentioned with the Three Rivers Theater Company. So we're hoping to help them be successful and create more activity at Francis Theater.
C. Manager. This time we'll go into our new business. First time discussing possibly approved purchase of police radios. Motion to approve.
Can I make a motion?
Question by Councilman Johnson, say it with Councilman Cook. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cook. Floor is open for discussion. Kenny, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Please, this is the six radios that we included in the budget this year. It's the first phase of four-year plan that we have to transition over to the new radios where the radios that we have been using, once they cease operation, will no longer be maintained by the company. So we've started in advance to plan for that transition rather than having to get caught at some point in time and purchase a bunch of radios at one time. So the police department, we've budgeted for six radios a year for four years.
Floor is open for discussion of police committee. Been no discussion? Call it up, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Bright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next time discussing possibly approved purchase of the building on 408 North Roman Street. Motion to approve. Motion by Councilman Russell? Say it, Councilman Holly, Councilman Russell.
I think it's a lot better building than what we're in right now. I don't see it.
Councilman Holly.
Looks like a decent price. We've got to use for it.
Floor is open for discussion.
We'll get into that first. I know we're looking at purchase of the building, but I haven't seen anything yet with any type of the soft cost that's going to go along with that building. Is that not something that we would like to discuss and see on the financial side of it prior to purchasing the building? Maybe Dr. Curley could shed some light on what our financial is as far as, because we don't want to purchase it and then see that we don't have the money to finish it, remodel it, and get into it. Or Mr. Helms, whoever, he may have more of a depth on that soft cost side of things. And soft costs, I mean, the remodel, what it's going to have to be, are we doing both floors? Because I think that's going to have to figure into the, to the purchase of this.
I can speak to a little bit of it, and then Mr. Helms can, or whoever. I think we've looked at a couple of different estimates we haven't set on and really talked about exactly. We, me and C. Manager have talked about what we're looking to put into it, what we think it costs. But right now, we know it needs a roof, which is about $135,000 to $140,000. We know it needs central heating area and the two big rooms that's not been built out, which is roughly $115,000 to $120,000. And then from then on, it's just basically what we do with the building as far as finishing out the other two parts. The remodel, from what I've looked at and from talking to different builders, the flooring is still good. It's fairly, probably new flooring. We're going to move a couple of walls. So we're hoping to use some of the inmates to do some of that. But my, my rough estimate is, this is just me off without, without person, not counting the purchase of the building, we're probably somewhere close to $400,000 to $500,000.
Okay. Because I know what he said earlier today, one of the estimates was 1.7 million.
That's replacing all the flooring, removing walls, and basically starting from scratch.
It's not necessarily removing all the walls, but removing a number of walls, finishing out the unfinished rooms, painting all the interior of the building, on the flooring. That's including the cost.
What do you say the square foot is of that building?
Twenty, 24, 14,000.
So I guess, Dr. Curley, me, on the financial side of it, we get into purchasing this for 175, and then let's just say we have a million dollars in rehab cost once we get into it. What does that look like?
Well, we have initially budgeted $400,000.
I'm sorry?
We have initially budgeted $400,000 for the initial stage, and it'll probably be not accomplishable over a one-year period. So there'll be a lot of workshops, I suppose, on what you actually want to do inside the building, which will, if, if it falls within this FY outside the limits that we have put in the budget at the moment, we can always do a budget amendment as long as we, we have the revenue flow. And I think we do.
So we wouldn't have to do a USDA loan or anything of that nature to rehab that?
Well, that was part of the original plan, I think.
We have an application in with USDA. It's a request for a combination of both grant and loan funding. We're currently in the 30-day environmental compliance period. We're awaiting responses from all the different entities that have to respond to that. And we're still waiting to hear from the USDA as far as how much of that money they made grant as opposed to how much of it would be low interest loan program.
Kenny, this price, that's only seven or eight dollars a square foot. Am I right for the purchase?
Tentatively, yes. Yeah. Let's talk about that.
I don't know where else you're going to get a building of that stature in the middle of town for seven or eight dollars a square foot.
Oh, I agree. I'm just making sure on the side, on the other side of it, what we're going to have to invest to get it to that, to be able to move into it. Because I think you're going to have a, you know, a cost factor of going in. It's kind of like remodeling a house. You might buy the house for $25,000, and it costs $75,000 a rehabbing. So now you're back up, your cost is back up.
I think a lot of what's in, how the council wants to approach the building, the layout and renovations of the building, the more that we can work within the layout as it is today, the less the cost would be for the renovations. So that's something to keep in mind. And then the speed at which we want to move forward with it, particularly some of the secondary areas that would be, say, new areas that we have currently have available to us, could impact that as well from pricing standpoint. So the layout speed, what type of finishing to put in the building, you know, you could spend many millions, I mean, if you wanted to, if you chose certain types of finishes. But I think it can be done for less as well by trying to work within what's existing.
Yeah, I feel like we've all walked through it a couple, two or three times and looked at it. The way it sits right now, it's better than what we're in by far. I realize that it may cost a little bit to get it up. I don't see it going past the $500,000. I don't see that we need to do that much to it. I think that those two rooms need to be finished out, the roof, the heating air on the, on the two other buildings. Other than that, I think most of what we can do, I think we can do some painting. Kingston bought that one from, from the hospital and done most, 90% of work theirself with inmates and with volunteers and stuff. I think we can do the same thing. But I guess the biggest thing is we're trying to improve the image. That is a big step toward improving our image as a city. We have to take pride in what we have. And I'm sitting here, got sweat running down my back in a building that we can't even keep cool. And don't worry about buying a building. So I'm just, you know, the roof's leaking in, I don't know how many spots. I see garbage cans sitting everywhere. So we either, we're either going to fix this building and make it look like something we're proud of, or we're going to have to do something. So I think that building sitting in the middle of town and sitting there doing nothing for nobody, it makes our great city go.
Oh, you still plan on moving the generator over from the old hospital?
If you can carry it, we'll move it.
I need a little help. I think that's a good idea, bring it out over there.
Any other comments?
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Bright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Council comments? Councilman Holly?
No, I don't. I'm back to that building now if I may be of interest. I think if we do it wisely and we do, you know, get a construction manager in, just work that thing as we can, as we can afford, I think we can do it. We're good guys. Now, if you're going in there and hire ESP, eventually you're not going to get close to our dollar figure. But if we're smart, we can do it for a while. But it'll be worth it.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman Russell?
Friday night, home run, next Friday night.
How many more we got, Councilman?
I think they have decided now to go to November. So is it three more?
Thank you. I'm taking it on. Thanks, all of you. It's in there. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cook?
Just a lot to say thank you. I know the police department is very vigilant yesterday of being around town and being seen. I think that makes a big difference all over town when you're having an event like that to curb different crime elements that may be out. Thank y'all for coming and doing that.
The only comments I've got is to elaborate a little bit on what Mr. Bruce Knoblock had said earlier, the pride that we take in our communities. And I want to thank our departments for the pride that you do put into it. And I want to thank the residents for what you do. Without you, our city wouldn't exist. So we thank you. And it's exciting. We've got some exciting times going on in Harriman. We've got some big things fixing to happen in Harriman. We've had some big things that's happened in Harriman. Downtown is continuing to grow. Midtown is continuing to grow. So our great city is moving forward, and it's because of the workers that we have and the people that we have that makes this a real turn. And it's because of you guys sitting up here and the ladies that work in the office. And I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you put in. As I said before, it doesn't go unnoticed. And we appreciate everything you do. Motion to the gentleman.
Motion. All in favor of that? Any votes like that?
All in favor of that? Any votes like that?